Religious to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on your honor, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chriseng, Shipman, Rechner, Henry, Ister.
I'm not sure on the agenda, is there any audience comment on any agenda items? Okay, uh, the new business, we have a proclamation. What this is, is on April 1st, 2014, Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service. They asked me to pass a proclamation. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and vital to our community as we grow. Whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs. Whereas national service participants addressing the most challenging faces in our cities from educating students for the job of the 21st century, supporting veterans and military families to providing health services and helping communities improve. Whereas national service participants serve in more than 60,000 locations across the country. Whereas the senior corps of volunteers in our community have a major impact with programs like foster grandparents in their schools and playgrounds. Whereas the Corporation for National Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, strengthen communities, and joining with the National League of Cities, City of Service, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service, April 1st, 2014. I need a motion to accept that proclamation. We have a motion. Second?
Henry?
Yes.
Ister? Chriseng?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Do you want to make a DOT closure? Dale?
Yes, on June 21st, Sunbury Murder Club is requesting the closed part of Market Street down around the park. They're gonna have a car show as a fundraiser. Uh, they're using, took the 1st of June as the date and a rain date of June 22nd.
More motion?
Yes, I think that's more motion.
Snyder? What's the rain date again?
22nd. 22nd.
Yes.
Chriseng?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
I'm not sure what Dale's name was. Proving the pay invoices?
No, I didn't get it from the last.
Done?
Sorry.
Uh, we have 188,152.93 of general fund expenses. And 5,015.51 of liquid fuels expenses. Uh, the voucher was sent previously. Need to pay our bills, I make a motion.
Chriseng?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
SRI Business and Economic, is Amy here? Emergency services fees?
Yeah, I'm putting table that for now because I'm waiting on some more information from, uh...
Sax?
You know, from, uh, actually from, uh, the Americas on equipment costs and stuff like that on some gear. I got a lot of this stuff. Uh, I got packets out to everybody except Chief Kipple and I have hers in my vehicle. And I've contacted you on that about, about what you discussed with me. And, uh, but as soon as we get everything done, and I haven't gotten the information back, back from the solicitors yet, I sent a packet to them also through the field. Once we get that back, then we'll have a discussion on it. Hopefully, hopefully we'll be able to see the message.
Wow, that's it. But we'll put, we'll let Amy, we'll have audience comment, and if Amy shows up, then we'll go through the SRI. Uh, is there any audience comment, anything particular? Just identify yourself. Yes, sir?
I'm very excited. I'd like to comment and ask questions about a number of things. First being LED street lighting that was purchased for the location of Fourth and Market Streets in Sunbury. Purchase price of the streetlights in this discussion was $9,745 for four lights to be fitted with high-resolution surveillance and wireless network, as per invoice 614 of 10/15/2013 from Global Security Tactics. I'm curious as to why that purchase was made and if it's related to the security cameras that the cities installed.
First question, the reason why they bought is for efficiency? Second, no.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, it's been established to admit so of October 22nd, 2012, in the City Council that the city awarded the bid for procurement of their security cameras to Global Surveillance System of Chantilly, Virginia. Ultimately, the city purchased the cameras from Genesis Security Integrations of Pittsburgh at higher cost, even though the bid was awarded to Global of Chantilly, Virginia. And as a side note, Genesis Security, uh, changed their name to Global Security Tactics. And I'm asking how the bid acceptance change occurred and why?
Well, I'll be back in that, I'll be able, Mr. Snyder, if I know, go through his notes.
I have one of them withdrew, so I'm not sure how.
Yeah, I remember, it's been two years now.
All right, thank you. Now, through right to know requests of 131, 2014, it has been learned that the city of Sunbury bids specified cameras with day and night vision. Sorry, it's good enough to get those to me through a right to know request. But the invoices for the security cameras purchased tell a different story. The camera invoice indicates that the city cameras are not capable of night vision because only M12 SEC cameras are listed. The correct model would have been the M12 SEC D Night, which come complete with night sensors. As additional proof, the Mobotics M12 Camera Manual can be consulted, and this is where I have the information on the night sensors. The M12 SEC cameras the city has acquired also have microphones that can be turned off and on or be permanently disabled. It would be illegal for the city to record anyone without their approval, and this camera feature could possibly cause the cameras to be declared illegal or cause the city great expense if the city attempted to use any illegally procured recordings from the cameras. And I'm curious whether the camera microphones have been permanently disabled. Once they are, according to the manual, they can never be turned on again. So I'm, I'm asking...
We don't use them. There's been no effort on discussion to use any recording. As you said, it's illegal, it won't be used.
All right, but what can happen is those cameras can, because they have that capability, if they have not been deactivated, then you can have...
If they're not hooked up, they can't be used.
Well, they are hooked up.
The recordings aren't hooked up.
All right, thank you. It has been learned that Mr. Aaron Nygro was paid at least $12,500 for professional services. I have those receipts here. These services were for installation of security cameras in Sunbury, and the $12,500 figure brings the installation cost beyond the bid threshold. Therefore, it appears the installation of the cameras should have been placed for bid. By failing to conduct a background check concerning Mr. Nygro, the integrity and security of the city's security camera system is in question, especially when Mr. Nygro's current legal difficulties are considered. According to the Mobotics M12 Camera Manual, the camera system can be accessed remotely, and this would include access for Mr. Nygro or any of his associates that he may care to allow to access the system here in Sunbury. So, Senator, I'm curious as to who was authorized to tap into that system? Or has anybody been?
Well, I think I told you that the last five meetings, the same thing. The police department was authorized to do it. There's, there's cameras in the city hall. In year 12,005, I think if you go back and research even further, you'll find out that there's specific private money that was put into that, uh, which is probably the difference over the $10,000. You know, it's like the Ford Discovery put money up to add cameras of theirs in situations there. So there's probably, uh, and various other money came in from private enterprise that are part of our system.
Also the Eagles, whatever that's up.
Right, so that wouldn't have anything to do with the, with the bid.
It's not the bid for the cameras, rather it should have been a separate bid because it was a separate activity for installation. Yes.
Yes, and they did that. What I'm saying is, you said he got $12,000. I'm saying if you take the money that the Eagles put up, you take the money that Ford Discovery Foundation put up and other people, that's what put it, the $10,000 we bid on, we got our work, our money for.
All right, well, we'll take...
And there will be, continue to be people that be added on to this, that's the goal.
We'll take a look at that.
Check out, I don't think you have to bid for pressure services here.
Well, it would be questionable, Rick, whether that would be an appropriate term for what was done. Uh, I haven't gone into all the ramifications of it, but we'll look at it further.
When, when did they create the, they, they sold the credit on 18,000, too? How long's that?
Couple of years.
So I'm concerned that 18,000, you don't have to bid it, you just...
10?
Well, go ahead.
Keep on, very good. A 314, 2014 right to know request to the city of Sunbury shows minutes of Sunbury Council of December 23rd, 2013, awarding the 2014 tax anticipation loans to the Swineford National Bank. My question is, is the Swineford National Bank, who will supply the 2014 tax anticipation loan for the city?
You just said Swineford National Bank, got it, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
Then that's who will get it.
Well, I'm questioning that because the camera bid did not go as...
The answer to your question is whoever got the high bid at the meeting is who got the, got the... And I'm not, I'm unsure if that was Swineford. My last one, yes.
Mr. Sax, the last meeting, the same question was asked.
Yes, but it was, it was never answered. It was whoever got the lowest bid. It wasn't what bank, and that's the question I just asked, what bank?
Well, last name, we did discuss what bank it was, it was asking Kevin.
Yes, well, I had the same question by, um...
Mr. Ward?
Yeah, Mr. Ward there. Swineford got it by, oh, it was like a hundred fifty dollars difference total to our hash.
Yeah, Terry supplied me those and, and...
It was real close, very, very close.
Well, Mr. Sax, we're going to follow back to installer, Nygro, and so forth, and about the dollar value of 10,000 and so forth. What is the purpose of the question, are you implying something?
I'm, I'm not implying anything. I'm asking a question because it was my understanding that it was stated here in council by Mr. Snyder, and, you know, we can review that and look at the videos, that 10,000 was the threshold on that installation. So it was stated here that that was the case, and that's why I'm talking about 10,000 because council specified in these chambers that 10,000 was the threshold. So that's why I'm asking, when I have receipts from Mr. Nygro for $12,500, and at council, it's been said if the threshold was 10, I'm questioning why was the bid?
Well, threshold for the city is somewhere, but when we take other entities like the annuals and Ford Discovery, that can't, it is not counted. You're referring to the city itself.
I am.
Okay. And instead, I was, at that point, that was Mr. Sax or Mr. Snyder said? That's what he said then.
So, but there's no delineation. These bills are all to the city of Sunbury, they're not to anyone else. So are you telling me that the city of Sunbury paid, and then they were reimbursed after they paid for that installation?
Exactly.
I can tell you, I don't know about the other monies, but I can tell you for a fact, I personally wrote a check over it, $5,000 from Sunbury.
Yeah, and I have that, Rick. I've seen it. My last item is the minutes of the Sunbury City Council are deficient, often omitting significant and important facts, uh, both from audience and other contributors in a meeting. And, uh, these omissions constitute violations of Pennsylvania Sunshine Act. Uh, there's currently a case being heard, Citizens for Pennsylvania's Future versus Allegheny County Health Department. And I would encourage the city to correct these violations so that, uh, on pleasantries, judicially even, can be avoided.
Then my question, you say, are you saying we're purposely omitting something for the minutes?
I, I don't know whether you're purposely doing it, but that's what's happening. Uh, what your motivation is, why it's happening, I would only be able to...
Motivation, now, now you're implying.
I would only be able to, yes, and I can't, I can't...
Oh, my point is, we're gonna microphones here. If someone doesn't speak up, they can't pick it up. Are they gonna take and redo the minutes? If they can't hear, they can't type it. You understand?
Thank you.
You're here forever.
I understand that.
I'd just like to point out that there's a difference between minutes and a transcript.
Yes.
Transcript is a word by word. Minutes are just a summary of the meeting, so that your summary could be different than everyone else sitting in the room, just because what you believe should be the summary, that, that, your, your opinion is only one of many. But the minutes of a meeting are a summary of the meeting, it is not a transcript. You understand?
That's correct. The transcript, uh, Mr. Shipman, is word for word.
That's correct.
You do not have a transcription this year. But the summary would contain all important points or items that are mentioned. Not a word for word. I didn't say a transcript. I said...
I understand it.
Minutes.
What I'm saying is, the minutes that are presented are, in the, in the opinion of those who made them up, a summary of the meeting. They are reviewed by council. If you're unhappy with that, then you ought to come and talk to us.
I am right now.
Okay.
Nothing is left out.
Your, your complaint is noted.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
We're General Russell, community activist. On February 12th, 2014, I put in a right to know request with the code office so that I could receive copies of all of my complaints, since Councilmember Whiteener keeps saying that my complaints are frivolous. I did not get a complete report because it did not include any findings, any investigative reports, uh, any conclusions at all that should have been done by the co-officers had they gone and investigated any of my complaints. And I am saying tonight that I find it to be a mystery that Councilman Whiteener would accuse me of filing false reports and threaten to have me arrested for filing false reports. How can he do that if he doesn't have that type of evidence?
Well, and I don't think he did.
That's the code office. I don't know, I'm just saying I find it to be a mystery that I would have seven pages from 2010 to the 14th and not have one copy or one investigative report to, in compliance with that complaint. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Russell, I'm glad to see that you're feeling better, too.
Yes, I am, sir, but I did go to my doctor, so if you want a report, please put in a right to know request.
I'm just glad to see, I understand, I, I heard that you were... We're not feeling well, and I needed to use your walkie-talkies, all right? You hear that?
That's right.
And I'm glad to hear that you're...
And I, I didn't use it tonight to come.
Very good, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
She's back.
Hello, I'm, I'm Don Quixote, and, uh, I was told, basically, I had some issues with, um, um, a specific officer, um, that, um, basically, I, I put a little bit of, a note, went into the mayor's office, and that I was told to come to city council and allow my mentally handicapped gentleman here, I take care of. He's actually been with me for six years, and, um, they actually all wanted to tell you guys what they felt, um, about what was said to them at my home on June 12th of, of 2013. Um, it was a, an incident, and I asked that, that I could have this specific officer not to be allowed on my premises and not to farther harass me. I, if I was dying of a heart attack, I wouldn't want her to come even save me. I, it was, it's pretty bad. Um, they're all here today. Um, ever since that incident, when I asked city, you know, I talked to the mayor's office about the incident, how I felt, um, I feel as though now, you know, there's several different incidences that's going on here. Um, they're mentally handicapped. Um, they, we, I deal with Joe Lubowski at the HMR building a lot, and he really loves what I'm doing. There's not too many people that, you know, take it upon himself. I was a single father, and I raised my kids since they were like little ones. I was, for 14 years, and I raised my kids. And so my kids are grown, so now I have, these are like my kids now. Um, I'm like their dad. I have a campground, I take them up to Great River Riverside Campground. Uh, we did it for four years in a row, we were up in Milton. Um, we go to H2 Church, you know, God willing, that, you know, I'm praying that this is all in God's hands. Basically, now we're being just, you know, it's common sense, you know, my, actually, my, uh, my uncle, Jim Heilich, just retired as a police detective in Harris, or the Susquehanna Township Police Department, Jim, Jim, Jim Heilich. He did all the internet detective work. He, he caught a lot of child pedophiles off the internet and whatnot. I think he retired. Um, he, he's, he said, just pray about it, and he's, he's really disappointed about the situation. Um, we're being bollage now with just fines, like ridiculous fines, like just, they're mentally handicapped. One of the main things is that they're bipolar, and occasionally, they're gonna get a little bit louder upset. That's where I step in as a dad. Okay, maybe get down, lower your voice, learn how to talk. My uncle said that a lot of, I don't know, police departments, I don't know if they have the capability to handle or talk to mentally handicapped people instead of just, you know, packing them with fines and calling it a day. Um, even when I first met Jeff Burrows, um, he had a caseworker, um, HMR. He lived on his own and, and on Walnut Street. The most ridiculous thing is, number one, he has a, had a payee at the time. Um, his payee was at an HMR building. Um, he went there, and he can tell you the story, I'm just, you know. His first fine was Street and Code Enforcement Office, you know. Um, he didn't, he's mentally handicapped, of course, you know. He went to his payee, can you please buy me a shovel? Can you purchase my salt for me? I'm being told I, I have to do it. They were negligent, not him. They didn't go and buy him the salt. Uh, of course, you know, he ended up with a $300 fine. I paid this fine out of my money. I, I think there's, there's not, and there's not even, I went to, um, Se, you know, Penn, North Penn Legal. They're incapable, they have their hands tied, there's no mentally handicapped advocate in the area. There's nothing in, at Strawberry Square. You can't call the Attorney General's Office. These guys are out on a limb. And their traffic citation, now, Kim, he's bipolar, and this is right, two tickets for exact same thing, and it's actually, um, for, I don't have my glasses on, but each one is for open hand contact, which, if, they're, they're wrote as summary offenses, so they can't apply for an attorney that would take their case, so they're kind of railroaded into just paying the fine. You know, you, you get me? It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a ticket which if they would be filed criminally, they would get a free attorney to possibly get before a judge and be able to plead your case and maybe have a little bit of defensive help. Other than that, they're just, this is 800 in fines. Um, James Kuiper, he, he was basically told to shut up and, and, you know, by an officer. And basically, he, it was 4th of July, they were all lighting fireworks. A child got hit by a firework at 10 o'clock. A child was in the middle of the road without her mother, which I'm, you know, if I was, if I was officer, I wouldn't even went to the mentally handicapped guy, I would've went to the lady. Ma'am, why is your child in the middle of the road, 10 o'clock in the evening, when people are lighting up fire? Where are you at? There was no photographs. You know, Judge Applebaum wouldn't allow me to speak in his behalf. I gotta find out, I gotta go to, um, to Machete's office. So I'm actually gonna pay for power of attorneys over these guys to, so I can speak in their behalf. I'm being forced out of the courtroom because I can't talk to them. Um, there's no advocate that can talk to them, so they're stuck in, in a situation where they have to talk for himself and end up just being rewarded, paid a fine.
Just let me interrupt. We can't do anything with the court system. If you, if you're here to talk about my police department...
Yeah.
Then just, then let's talk about the...
Yeah, I was wondering, is, is this, I wanna make sure that, you know, if there's a problem with me writing a, a thing about an officer, just take the, take the retaliation on me. Leave these guys out of it. They're on a very limited income, and, you know, if, if there's a problem, put me in North Penn County prison. I don't have a problem setting for 30 days.
If somebody retaliates against you, or what?
I, I think it's a personal attack against me, if they're being asked where you live. Do you still stay at Don Quixote's house? Yeah. So the, the officer just told, you can ask how, them personally, how, like they were told to shut up by, and, and didn't allow me to explain nothing, just, okay, here's your ticket, go on.
And, and that's for what? I don't know.
Um, for creating a little bit of disturbance at a, at a, and all four of them got a fine. Four mentally handicapped people said it. Each one of them got a $200 fine, said it's 800, that's 800 there, that's a big outage. This is 800 here, that's an outage.
Who was this at? At your house, or at a, a restaurant, or where would it?
It was at, um, he was visiting a mentally handicapped, um, Scott's Towers, or another many. He visits a resident there that is also mentally handicapped. All four of them... Got, got a fine, and it's 800, that's 800 I gotta take care of. Um, here's another 800. Um, he, a bottle rocket hit a little girl, and that's 800. So right there is just like, oh, I don't even know the mathematics, it's, it's up there, sorry.
These have all gone to the magistrate?
Huh, excuse me?
These have gone to the magistrate?
Yes, and he don't want me, yeah, Judge Applebaum doesn't want me talking in her behalf because I'm not an attorney. And there's nobody, I can't, I don't know why Penn Legal is not, when they, I send to Penn Legal, they're saying we can't help you, kick them out the door.
Yeah, no, that...
I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do.
I can't help you.
These are incidences that, like, realistically, if there's like a little bit of disturbance, like, okay, they could've got a warning. And if they would've came back the second time and said, hey, look, we have a problem, you guys either, you know, call something.
Well, I guarantee you the police department didn't just drive down to Scott Towers and went looking for, give somebody a fine. They did something down there that somebody, Sandy Ressler, somebody in the housing party, called the police department, that's why they were there.
Absolutely, I agree, I agree.
So I'm bringing anybody at this table to judge what happened, that's why we have the justice system.
Absolutely, and I agree with you 100%. And there's a lot of warnings, you know, there's a lot of disturbance at a lot of homes here in Sunbury, Pennsylvania. And I guarantee you, a lot of police department, they, they walk away the other way. They say, okay, you have to, now the second time around, they might give fines, but there's... Realistically, I think, like, little warning should be issued instead of just pounding with fines. It really is starting to kill us.
All right.
That's it.
We'll look into it. Anybody else? Amy?
Oh, yes.
You don't have to run.
I do, I'm late, I'm sorry.
It's quite all right.
On behalf of the Business and Economic Development Committee of Sunbury Revitalization, I am here to, um, make a request. We have been working on a marketing plan, uh, for, it's coming up on a year that we've been focusing our efforts on this marketing plan. And, um, we developed a survey targeting individuals from outside the area, um, trying to determine, uh, desirable business-friendly aspects to draw people to our area. In utilizing that information, um, the marketing campaign would focus on our technological capabilities, recreational opportunities, and low business costs available to entrepreneurs. We have been working with sire advertising and developed a plan to utilize email, social media, the local university publications, including the alumni publications and professional trade publications to reach the demographics that we've been targeting and found through our research of the survey. Initial intent of this was to go to the IDA for Northumberland County and request, um, $20,000 in funds to help fund this marketing strategy, both short and long term. We've estimated about $5,000 in volunteer hours and staff hours directly through the SRI office and within our capacity, and are requesting that if the city would be willing, we would like to ask for $5,000 to match the SRI funds and to supplement the funds that we would be requesting from the IDA. This is coming specifically towards this marketing campaign, and we're hoping to utilize those funds and match that campaign to develop and begin this marketing strategy.
When do you need this?
We will be visiting the IDA with our more detailed proposal again, I think, in April. The first week of April, second week of April is their, the next meeting for the request there. there.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it would be a great opportunity to leverage some city funds. I'd, I'd like to maybe have some time to work with our treasurer, and we do have some, usually some money for economic development, and we'll see if we can have some, something together to help.
Okay.
That's okay.
Yeah, that's why I asked her how, how fast you had to have this.
Not.
Just how little time looks.
Not directly around the corner, but if it's, there's the ability to look at both the availability of funding and any details that we might be able to additionally provide that would answer any questions that there may be. We're hoping that the three entities coming together, SRI, the city, and the county to promote the area would be very beneficial.
Can I just ask, how, how are you gonna reach the people, the survey?
The survey, we had already distributed and got the results from that. We did two surveys, we had done one from people that are out of the area and what might draw them to relocate to a different area without specifying this area, and those were the three things that seemed to be most important to entrepreneurs that we did. The second survey was targeting people who were living and were working here that had come from outside of the area, and the technological capabilities that we have found that we have through the downtown that aren't necessarily available in the surrounding areas in addition to the recreational opportunities and the low cost of business, both in lease or purchasing space available, taxes being lower somewhere to put for business expenses in general. The majority of what would draw people to relocating and factors that they would strongly consider when relocating.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for you?
Thank you very much.
I'll have an answer for you later.
Thank you.
Amy, if you were asked for April 30th, you need that money?
Um.
Please type to have it.
We would be presenting to the county the first week of April, so I don't have a specific date, but I can talk to Zach who's been, we've been working very closely and trying to determine what our timeline will be and get an answer back to council.
Okay, thanks. Any other discussion? The spring cleanup dates for city residents only, and I emphasize city residents only, April 22nd, 24th, 29th, and May 1st. We'll be getting some more information out, we'll be a little closer to that. Street sweeping begins on March 31st, no parking violation tickets being issued, and we actually have a street sweep, but it works this year, so we're coming on March 31st.
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I ask you a question on that?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you're saying with no parking violation tickets, so nobody's gonna be ticketed or on the street? Or street.
No parking is why you get a ticket. No parking.
That's not true.
It says no parking.
No parking violation tickets being issued.
But that, that means.
No parking.
Parking, where there's no parking, you're going to get a violation. I guess that's what confused, I can see what you're saying. We're getting tickets, we're coming, you're getting tickets if you're there. Please read your sign. Well, I want to thank you.